Hello, hello, hello. Is that on? Can you hear me in the back? There we go. All right. I know we're a little after six, so let's go ahead and get started. So can I have the candidates, please, come up to the table at the front? We've got your names listed here in alphabetical order. I think some are still on their way, but we're going to go ahead and get started with those of us here because we do have folks online. You're number four. Feel free to make yourself comfortable, please. Please, please. All right. Good evening, and thank you for joining us and to learn more about the candidates for District 11 here in the city of Atlanta. My name is Ernest Brown, and I'm one of the founders of Abundant Housing Atlanta, your host for tonight's event. Abundant Housing Atlanta is a local organization that helps everyday Atlantans advocate for better housing, zoning, and land use policies to ensure that anyone who wants to live in Atlanta can. Before we begin, I want to thank our hosts at St. Luke's for hosting us here. I want to thank the candidates for offering themselves up for public service and joining us here tonight, and I want to thank you, the audience, for coming to learn about this. And so that you all know, we also have some folks online as this event is being livestreamed. We'll begin the evening with a series of quick yes or no questions to provide a sense of power. Large field of candidates use a handful of questions by raising their hands. We'll then move on to some short response questions we have prepared in advance, and we'll end with written audience questions. So there are note cards in the seats. We'll have volunteers come to pick those up throughout the event, and we'll then ask several of those questions at the conclusion of the event. Volunteers, if any of you are in the room, I think they're actually mostly in the hallway right now, but they'll come to make themselves available, and I'll remind you throughout the course of the event. So to cover as much ground as possible, we're asking candidates to limit their responses to 60 seconds per question. Our timekeeper, Anton, please raise your hand. We'll raise two cards to indicate when you're running short on time. There'll be a yellow card, let's just show it. So you have 15 seconds left when you see the yellow card, and when you see the red card or the orange card, that means you've now run out of time. I'll do my best to allow you to finish your thoughts if you're close to completing that, but I do have a button to disable your microphone if you're having a hard time realizing how long 60 seconds is. I hope not to use it, but I'm letting you know it's there. We'll conclude the formal event hopefully by eight. We have to be out of here by 8:30, but we do want to allow time for the community to interrupt the candidates after the form. So to begin, I'd like the candidates to introduce themselves. Some quick guidelines. Introduce yourself, providing your name, neighborhood, and how long you've lived in the district. And just to give us a bit more sense of how you're thinking about this issue, housing is a topic, is actually a multitude of topics. It ranges from building wealth through homeownership, having an affordable place to sleep for a low-income family, or even being close to many of these, like jobs and schools. So when you hear the topic "housing," what's the actual topic that comes to your top of mind in one or two words? So just as a quick form of introduction, and then we'll move on to the yes or no questions. We're going to start here, closest to me, with the candidates here. We'll move down that way, and then we'll kind of move over who starts every time so that we start with a different candidate throughout the night. So Tony's not here yet, so we'll begin with you, Andre.
Andre Bergen, I'm running for Atlanta City Council, District 11. I've been in the district my entire life, born and raised. Bought my house in the district in 2017, so I've been here close to nine years coming up. In terms of kind of why I'm running and what I'm about, it's just kind of understanding economic mobility. While Atlanta is becoming a tech hub, it's important that we make sure that the communities that help build the city aren't left behind as the city continues to progress. So when it comes to kind of looking at economic mobility, housing is at the center of that, and I want to just bring the skills that I have to the table. Again, Andre Bergen, running for Atlanta City Council.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Dingle. I'm a candidate for Atlanta City Council, District 11. I've been firmly planted in the district since 2008, since I attended college at Clark Atlanta University. When I think of housing in Atlanta, I always say that Atlanta has always proven to be an equitable city. We were the first city in the entire country to have fairly funded housing homes, projects, as we like to call them. So I think Atlanta needs to return back to putting equitable housing at the forefront. And when I say equitable housing, that means even for our homeless, if they can add something to society as far as cleaning or a job, and they're provided homes, or so on, whatever job you work, you should be able to afford, to have a roof over your head for yourself, if you have a family or loved ones. Once again, my name is Stephen Dingle, candidate for Atlanta City Council, District 11. Thank you.
My name is Harold Hartnett, candidate for Atlanta City Council, District 11. Five-generation Atlantian, born and raised here. Walter Elementary School, Frederick Douglass High School, Marsh Brown College, all of my education was happening in southwest Atlanta. One of the reasons why I started the Greenbrier CID Community Improvement District was housing had something to do with it, because there are so many people in Atlanta now that need affordable housing because the interest rate is going up in the city, but salaries aren't. That is why I feel it's very important. One thing I need to, I feel we need to bring back, is equitable housing. When we had the projects, there was a lot of homelessness then, but now we have a lot of it now, and it's growing even more because of affordable, and house living is hard now.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nate Jester. I am a Ben Hill native, product of Atlanta Public Schools, a Mays High School graduate, Marine Corps veteran, and a Harvard-trained attorney. I own a business that partners with churches and nonprofits to build affordable homes and opportunity across our city. We're currently working with three churches on projects in the city of Atlanta right now, including one that is in District 11. When I hear housing, or I hear us talk about housing, I think of a foundation, a foundation for our community. Everyone needs a home, and this is a foundation that has been cracked for many, for many years. And so as a city, as a community, we have to do more to make sure that everyone has a home and that we can continue to have the strong communities that make Atlanta what it is.
Good evening. My name is Keith Lewis, and I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Atlanta. I grew up in what is called Parkinson Woods off of Stewart Avenue, AKA Metropolitan, and then I moved over into the Campbellton Road area around 2021. But that is also a family, friends, home that we've lived in our whole lives. So when we speak about affordable housing, for me, what I think about as a nonprofit leader, I think about affordability and equitability. So my partner, which is my co-founder, we've shared in this house because of the prices in Atlanta. And I think as a grassroots organizer, a lot of times we don't speak about the reality of the pricing of homes, even the residents being priced out here. So what I'm focused on is bringing in more programs that our citizens actually get to partake of then. A lot of times, the homes that are available, when they say affordable housings, a lot of those units are already placed to peoples inside of their own little circles. So my goal is to make Atlanta a lot more equitable, a lot more inclusive, and give people like myself that have lived here forever an opportunity. I also operate, I'm a father first, so I've always spent time as a grassroots organizer working with homes and families that are going through rental crises.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Reginald Russian, and I'm a lifelong resident of Atlanta. Born and raised in Atlanta, Georgia, attended Frederick Douglass High School. I moved to District 11 back in 1997, where I raised my family. I also have served in the leadership role through the NPU for the past 20 years, 14 as the chairperson. So when I think about housing, I think about equity. We need to bring more equity to the community. I'm also a Marine Corps veteran, and there's a lot of homeless veterans out on the street. There's a lot of homeless people, and we need to bring more density and equity to the area where we can bring more affordable housing back to southwest Atlanta. So I look forward to working with the community and the city to bring that diversity back. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Sherri B. Williams. I'm a public policy and civic engagement consultant. I specialize in equity initiatives in underserved communities. And what that means is anything that has to do with equity, I'm normally the one that they're, to get in good trouble about a fight to help those that have no voice. I went to the Charles Lincoln Harper High School. I walked to school. I never rode a yellow school bus. I moved into District 11 in 2013. I've lived all across the country. Coca-Cola sent me to Chicago. I lived there for 16 years. Then I left Chicago and I went to Phoenix, where I was still involved in equity initiatives. My father worked on assembly line at General Motors, the Dorville plant that we thought would never close. So I'm always about working families. When I think of housing, I think of basic needs. I think of food, clothing, and shelter, and it should be a basic human right, shelter.
Kirk, could you please introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kirk Collier. I am a husband of nearly 20 years, father of six, and Atlanta resident for the last 10 years. We moved to Atlanta to take advantage of all the opportunities that are here, just like many coming from across the world and across this country, moving into our city and actually helping this, this housing crisis that we have now. I was able to move and purchase within the city of Atlanta with an Invest Atlanta grant. So I understand with rising prices how important it is for city government and city initiatives to help out with the housing crisis, not only as far as funding, but smart policy. Thank you again. My name is Kirk Collier, running for District 11.
Thank you, candidates. First, a quick programming note from our audio support. These micros are quite strong, so you don't have to lean forward too well. They'll pick up your voice. If not, we'll make sure you can hear about that. So the next section we're going to do, we're going to move to a quick raise of hands question so we can get a quick sense of where you all lie on a series of questions. So I'll remind you with each question, but just saying that here for this next section. So the first question. Raise your hand if you would support upzoning along the Campbellton Road Bus Rapid Transit Corridor to facilitate more mixed-use development along that corridor. I'll read it again. Raise your hand if you would support upzoning along the Campbellton Road Bus Rapid Transit Corridor to facilitate more mixed-use development. Thank you. Required parking makes housing more expensive, takes up land that could be used for homes, and discourages walkable, transit-friendly neighborhoods. Raise your hand if you would support eliminating parking minimums, and parking minimums for the audience, or the requirement that parking be added as part of new development? If you would support eliminating parking minimums for new housing developments? In the city? Yes. In the city of Atlanta. The question. Raise your hand if you would support eliminating parking minimums across the city of Atlanta for new housing developments. Thank you. The mayor has set a goal to build or preserve 20,000 affordable homes by 2028. Raise your hand if you think that number is too low. So the number should be higher, you should raise your hand. If you think 20,000 is the right number, or too high, keep your hand lower. Thank you. This one's about a specific project that I think we included some information about in the questionnaire we sent you. So a bit of context for the audience. So 111 Moreland was the proposal to develop a hotel into housing for formerly homeless folks. So the Rennelstown Civic Improvement League, a neighborhood organization, organized and voted to oppose 111 Moreland, which was a proposal to convert a vacant, dilapidated motel into 42 homes for formerly homeless individuals living in the Rennelstown neighborhood. If you had been on council at the time, raise your hand if you would have voted to support that, that project. So if you would have voted to support the project, raise your hand. If you did not, keep your hand lower. Thank you. Another one about a specific project that was in the questionnaire. The Amsterdam Walk redevelopment was a large, is a large-scale redevelopment of the Amsterdam Walk Commercial District that was proposed in the Virginia Highlands neighborhood, which would include 800 new homes with 20% reserved as affordable in a neighborhood with several amenities and very limited new housing. This project was met with organized neighborhood opposition. If you had been on council, raise your hand if you would have voted to support this project to add affordable and attainable housing to the Virginia Highlands neighborhood. Thank you. So I hope that was helpful, just to give a quick sense of where they are and a couple of issues, and we're going to begin going deeper into some questions as we proceed. So we'll actually begin with you, Kirk, for this question, and we'll move down the line, and then we'll kind of begin with a different candidate for each question. So, oh, and as a reminder, please be writing, writing questions on the note cards. We'll be kind of collecting those. And Griffin, one of our volunteers here, and Carissa, another volunteer, will come up to collect those throughout the evening. So first question, again, you're up first. The Atlanta City Design, which is now part of the city's charter, articulated two premises for how the city might prepare for its future. The first premise of the Atlanta City Design is that the city is going to change, that not changing is not an option, that our change will involve significant growth, and that if properly designed, growth can be a powerful tool for shaping the Atlanta we want to become. The second premise is that almost always, more people are better than fewer, that a diverse population is better than a homogeneous one, and that the most strategic scenario for growth includes everyone. Now, many of your questionnaire responses were consistent with these premises, but you also noted an imperative to preserve something about the character of our neighborhoods. When you think of your district and its neighborhoods, what is the character that we're trying to preserve as we adapt to the changes of the future? And I don't know if you caught this, so you'll have one minute to respond, 15 seconds with the yellow card, and then time's up with the, with the red card.
Namely, our green spaces and tree canopy. The character of most of southwest Atlanta are comprised of single-family homes on nice-sized lots. Now, as our city continues to grow, and I believe that it should, I believe that the growth should be focused on places that are already designated as growth areas. Eventually, it'll span around and get the rest of the city. But focusing on where we are already primed and ready for growth is important, mainly the downtown area, which would support, again, building homes there would also help to support the businesses that are already there and encourage the use of public transportation. See that yellow sign?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so for me, southwest Atlanta is just a very historic part of Atlanta. You've got to think about three, four mayors that came from this side of town that we've produced. And when it comes to the part that I want to preserve, it's the culture. Our district is, it's 96% black. And as much I am pro-diversity, I think what makes it such a historic and valuable area is the cultural richness and the economic, the different levels of economy we have. We have the residents in Niski Lake, just like we have the residents on Campbell Road, but we love and appreciate each other. And one thing that I want to preserve is by economically developing the area, is making sure we bring back a movie theater like we had Magic Johnson. Like, we had LT's Chicken Wings right there on Cascade and Fairbrook. It's making sure we have our legacy establishments and institutions that the people who are here now get to benefit off of, and we're not so worried about the people that are coming, because if we take care of the people now, the people who are coming can just come right on in, and we welcome them with open arms.
Happy to. So that was a lot about premises, but the question. When you think of your district, District 11, and its neighborhoods, what is the character we're trying to preserve as we adapt to the changes of the future?
Well, I think we need to really preserve our district, District 11, because we have so many long-term residents. We have ten residents that have been owning houses over 40 years. We have a lot of residents that may not live in a house, but live in an apartment, but have been living in the area for so long. I myself was born and raised in that area. Five generations, my whole family's from that area. So I remember when Campbellton Road was lively and had so many restaurants and stores and car dealerships to where it is now, to where I need to get, we need to get it back there. That's why I want to preserve our area. It's very important, it's historical. We have areas like Guilford Forest, and like Steve said, Niski Lake, and then we have apartments like Deerwood and Apple Tree. So we have the top of the paying scale down to the bottom, and I think we all get along, everything is good. I just think we need to preserve that area because it's very historic, because that's where you have all the civil rights people, Chosse Lowry, Andrew Young, people of that nature who were big in the civil rights movement, are from that area as well.
When I talk about character, I am talking about, I'm talking about people. My parents have lived in District 11 for over 50 years. When I was out canvassing, just a few weeks ago, I met a man who was the first black person to move into an all-white neighborhood in a formerly segregated Atlanta. It's important to me that the people who have contributed decades to building southwest Atlanta are able to stay there. So I agree that growth is good. I agree that growth is coming, and I agree that density will or can result in a net positive for our communities. We have to be careful, we have to be considerate, and we cannot let just the investors decide exactly what's, what gets built and where it gets built. This is a conversation that has to be had with the community, and it's important to me that we maintain the character and maintain the people while creating room for new people to come.
When I think of preserving culture, the house that I currently reside in has been in our family for 50 years, and our next-door neighbor is 90 years old, and Ms. Brown is such a key pillar in the community, so she knows everything and everybody in the community. So as a young man, when I used to play baseball for Cascade, I didn't realize what I was actually walking into. But in 2020, when we were able to bless families with meals of love through the pandemic, I was able to meet so many families who we fed during that time, who have been around since at least the 60s. I know this house has been in the family since about 1965. So when I think about someone living in a home for 60 years and then being possibly priced out, I think that's unfortunate. I think we must have a lot of voters say so from our community constituents. People must have a voice at the table on what is getting built in the community, but the legacy must be preserved by having more inclusion of our constituents.
When I think about the historical values of southwest Atlanta, especially in District 11, first come to mind is the natural green space and the tree canopy, as well as the seniors and the people that have lived in that community for 30, 40, and 50 years. At the same time, we need to preserve and have a healthy balance between new development and smart growth for the area. And so we have to be very careful when we're doing that and take that into consideration as we bring more density to the area, bring more infrastructure to the area, and keep that healthy balance, and that's going to be essential to do that. And so with southwest Atlanta, we want to continue to move forward and preserve that natural state. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherri B. Williams. When I think about preserving anything in the southwest Atlanta, the first thing I think about is what's important, and that's clean air and clean water and safe neighborhoods. I don't know if most of you know that the Cascade, we almost lost the Cascade Nature Preserve back in around the 60s. A developer wanted to clearcut that area and build apartments, but it's the black women along the Cascade Corridor that stood up to make sure that project died. So as we continue to move forward, we want to make sure that we maintain the character. That means inclusion of the voices of everyone that's there. It also means not allowing as much clearcutting in the future, because as we begin to grow, we do need to maintain our clean air and water, because those are the basic foundations of what we need to not just survive, but to thrive in southwest Atlanta in District 11.
Thank you. Did you hear the question?
Can you say it again?
I'm more than happy to. I will just jump to the actual question part. So many of the responses to our questionnaire were consistent with the premises of the Atlanta City Design, but also noted an imperative to preserve something about the character of our neighborhoods. When you think of the district and its neighborhoods, what is the character that we're trying to preserve as we adapt to the changes of the future?
Oh, definitely the canopy, right? Also, District 11 is not a monolith, right? I've lived in several areas, Grant Drive and Beecher Hills, Martins Park, and where I live now, in Adams Park and Laurin Hill. And so no two places in there are the same, but they're all beautiful. It requires us to preserve the parks, the living around the parks, and ensure that families have the ability to thrive there, that their children can walk there, that we are maintaining the character of family life, what that could look like and what that possibly can be, that we are maintaining that families are able to join together with their children and generations are able to stay there.
What are we trying to preserve? The unique cultural diversity that is southwest Atlanta. My parents didn't go to college, I was the first one in my family to go. I played baseball at Adams Park. What was amazing to me growing up was the fact that I can go to a grocery store and I can see my teacher from Peyton Forest there. Sometimes it scared me. I could also see my pastor at the grocery store. I could see Hank Aaron. I could see Shirley Franklin. That is only possible by the diversity of housing where people of all income levels are able to interact with each other at the park, at church, or at the grocery store. That's the stuff that we want to preserve with Adams Park, I mean, with southwest Atlanta, with District 11, because that diversity makes us unique. We build from each other, we develop unique perspectives that we can all grow from. That's why housing diversity is important. That's the thing that we're trying to preserve in terms of character of this area.
Thank you all. So our next question in this section, and again, a reminder to get audience questions ready. Many of your questionnaire responses and your responses to this first question noted the importance of community engagement and input to shape development proposals. As you know, there is no one community in Atlanta or even in your district. How will you approach understanding your constituents' perspectives, given the low rates of voter participation, modest NPU participation, and the unrepresentative-ness of the people like me who reach out to their elected officials? And then we'll begin with you, Stephen.
Yeah, this is something I pride myself on being, excuse me, guys, one of the youngest in the race, is that I know where to go where people are. So as we have the NPU meetings and other civic engagement, you know, our current council member has had several meetings in the past weeks. Being young, I know where to go find people and meet them where they are, whether it's the rec center, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a club, whether, like, I was just at a block party the other day on Campbell Road at 12 o'clock at night, but that's, those are constituents as well. So even me being out there was something that, they'd never seen a politician or a candidate even in places like that. And for me, getting people engaged, and we talk about involving them in decision-making, for me, it's just, everybody has to have a vision. You have a vision about improving a district, a area, a city, and you have to let people know the options of what that vision entails. So if you say, hey, I'm thinking about doing this, but here are the other options, you have to give the potential or projected results of each one and let them make a decision, because if you don't, then it's completely up to them, and that's fine. But to me, I'm always going to have something there on the table to tell them the projected results with other options, and it's up to them and us together to make the decision to move forward.
I've been around the NPU system, sorry. I've been around the NPU system over 25 years, and that's where a lot of people that are coming to the community make decisions. So you can talk to people there, the Cascade Business Association chairman, so we meet a lot of people throughout the community, especially now, when the road was closed and now it's back open. It's a lot of different things, and it's a lot of different people that want to engage in different things, political-wise, but they don't know how to do it. And that's where you go and talk to them. In the meetings, I've even held meetings in the community since I've been running, even when I wasn't running, meetings with different constituents in the community, finding out what they want, what they need, and what their needs are, what their wants are. With that, then you put together everything and tell them, look, this is what we need. Okay? You may want this, but this is what the community needs, and this is what we have to go on right here. And everybody just has to come together and work things out, and then that's how you meet, that's how you handle things. Everybody's not going to be on the same accord, and everybody's not going to be happy, but things have to still get done.
Community engagement is very important and will be a priority for me as your city council person on day one. We have some good structures in place, neighborhood planning units, community associations, and I will be sure that, you know, big projects or the vision for the community is being communicated through those structures. But I also recognize that everybody can't make it to a NPU meeting, everybody doesn't have time or may not want to participate in neighborhood associations. And so for me, it's important that I create additional structures that would allow people to engage and allow me to communicate both ways, with the community, with the constituents, and for the constituents to communicate to me. So within the first 100 days that I'm in office, I plan to announce a schedule for regular town halls that I will be having, office hours where members of the community can come and engage with me, and I will also be announcing like how we will do our regular newsletters and phone banking to make sure that the entire community is informed about what's going on.
I need to hear it one more time as well.
Oh, please. Just a question, Ben.
Yeah, just a question, yeah.
How will you approach understanding your constituents' perspectives on the multitude of issues that come before you, given how diverse the community is and given that not everybody proactively comes?
to make sure that the entire community is informed about what's going on.
I need to hear it one more time as well.
Oh, please. Just a question, Ben.
Yeah, just a question, yeah.
How will you approach understanding your constituents' perspectives on the multitude of issues that come before you, given how diverse the community is and given that not everybody proactively comes to NPU meetings or neighborhood associations?
Well, for myself, I'm a grassroots organizer, so I'm always in the community like ground level. So for me, I know we think about NPU meetings and, you know, merchants' associations, and those are important because I think those are a more established constituent, if that makes sense. But I think we have to have a grassroots approach, you know, whether it's directly door to door, the same way we hit doors when we're looking for support of the community, the same way we phone bank. You know, what I've noticed as a community organizer now, as an aspiring representative for the district, the work that goes in to get in the seat is not usually what's done once people are in the seat. So for me, I want to have integrity and loyalty to actually be there. And for me, it's easy because that's literally what I do for a living, you know. I help with the community and different issues. So I think, you know, definitely having those town hall meetings and all that is good. But we have to really make sure we're tapping in with the constituents of the community. We have to know who's in our community and we have to be present, not just when we're looking for your support, but actually once we're in office. So I guess my commitment is to always be available as I always have been. Thank you.
Community engagement, that's exactly what I've been doing for the past twenty years. As the NPU chair and leader of the community, I have been responsible for bringing people together, the city of Atlanta, department heads, business owners and community members, bringing them together, getting them to inform on upcoming events, private city projects, developments, you name it. And it's important that whoever's sitting in this seat continue to do that. And I'm committed to continue that, continue to do the outreach in the community, making sure that everything is transparent, get a community an opportunity to come out and voice their opinion and decision because we work for the community, and that's first and foremost, and that's the way it should be. Thanks.
Sherri B. Williams, and community engagement is what I am, is what I do, is what I enjoy doing. When I go to the grocery store, my mom says, why are you talking to those people? I believe we need to always meet people where they are. Everybody's not online. Everybody will never be online. There are people that have access to the internet only at libraries. So I think ongoing community education and better utilizing the libraries. Yeah, I said it, libraries. Do you know on the north side, sometimes you have to circle the parking lot to get a parking space in the library? That is a place for people on an ongoing basis to get information. And I think we need to make sure that we know that community engagement is actually engaging twenty-four seven, three sixty-four, not every four years. Thank you.
I'm more than happy to.
Thank you.
Again, the short version of the question. How will you approach understanding your constituents' perspectives, given that not everyone attends NPU meetings or neighborhood association meetings or comes to council meetings, but they're still your constituents?
Yes. I want to also apologize for being late. Traffic was unkind to me today. And so as a pastor and as a parent liaison, one of the things that I have done all the time is connect with people, go where they are. So when I was pastoring in Edgewood, we knocked on doors. I was a parent liaison at the Whiteford Elementary School, and so we knocked on doors every day in the community to get parents to come out and participate. As a pastor, you know, you're given a role of people and who they are supposed to be in your church. And so I've gone out every day and knocked on doors to see where they are. And so what I believe is the responsibility is to go where the people are, to engage them, to sit down with them, show up at their community meetings, show up at their activities, see where they are, go to the schools and provide information to parents so that they can come back and tell us what their needs are, what their goals are, what their dreams are, what their aspirations are. Thank you.
Andre Bargain. When it comes to driving community engagement, you can only drive what you measure, right? So if we are looking at the whole landscape or the whole canvas of what we can do, we can talk to people, we can dose social media, we can go print, we can go TV. There's a lot of different mediums, but we aren't actually tracking who's in those meetings, how many people, and what's effective with those individual groups. We look at District eleven, we know there's a lot of different demographics. There's people of different income levels, there are different people of different age levels. What's effective for them? We measure that. We make sure that we understand that NPU meetings may be largely populated by older people, not younger people. Social media, TikTok, might be younger people. We measure it, we make sure that we know who we're reaching, how we reach them, and we come up with the right marketing mix. These are the things I learned in my time in corporate America and of course, when I got my MBA. So that's how I want to make sure we're effective.
Derek Collier. I don't believe it's so much an issue of the methodology in which we engage, but it's the community, the perspective of whether or not their voices are being heard. When it came down to different projects that happened in our, in our district, the Cascade Road Complete Street Project, a project that should have taken a year or two, dragged on for four. There were many, many neighbor, town halls where our constituents, our neighbors voiced their opinions, but nothing happened. It's more or less, do they trust that when we speak, our voice is going to be heard? Do we trust or can expect anything to come of it? So my perspective is have a way to measure that the, that our constituents can measure the effectiveness of our work. A simple dashboard to track it and track it exclusively, well, not exclusively, but by district. Who is getting the work done?
Thank you. So one more reminder for any audience questions. I can ask questions all day, but I'd love to ask them of yours. Griffin and Chris will come around again, but yeah, please raise them and they'll come to you and pick them up. Thank you so much. And we'll try to have the next couple of questions be audience questions. Harold, we're going to start with you this time. Could you please push the microphone a little bit back? You're getting, it's catching some extra pops in the voice, so thank you. And just kind of sit back a little bit. But we're going to begin with you for this next question. I'll wait a second. Ready? In Fulton County, a median income household, which is around a hundred thousand dollars a year, makes seventy percent of the money that they need to afford a median price home, which is around four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Worded differently, the median family cannot afford the median home. And now this was not true even as far back as twenty twenty-one, so this is a somewhat recent phenomenon. This used to be a calling card for Atlanta that the middle class could afford a typical home, and we are losing that to a combination of price increases and more recently, interest rates. So what steps would you take to accelerate development of lower cost, smaller format homes that could service options for first time home buyers?
Well, one thing I would do is a-
A little bit.
I'm sorry. One thing I would do is I would set up a different kind of financing for homeowners. I'm in real estate, I'm a real estate investor, and I have friends in the real estate market. And they say now, instead of going after single family people, they go after married couples because now in order to buy houses, people need two incomes. So that is one thing I would do. I would set up different credit vouchers and different things for people to help. If they've been on a job long enough, they're making a certain amount of money that they don't have to put down so much down. That's, that's one thing that makes where people can't afford a house is the down payment. The down payment, because a lot of people put twenty percent down on a forty thousand dollar, a four hundred thousand dollar house is a lot of money. A lot of people can't afford that, and that's one way how they don't, aren't able to get in the house. I would put in different down payment programs from the county that will help first time home buyers only be able to put three percent down or no money down and just backload it on the mortgage. That way they could get in the house.
Thank you.
Could you ask the, could you ask the question once more?
Happy to. What steps would you take to accelerate development of lower cost, smaller format homes that could service options for first time home buyers?
First step I would take is to address in our zoning code how we treat single family zoning. And my goal is to make it easier to build what's called a missing middle, which is duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, homes that are still residential, not commercial, but would allow us to provide for more density without changing the character of a neighborhood or a huge spike in prices on that neighboring neighborhood. The second thing I would do is advocate for priority permitting for these sorts of missing middle homes or affordable homes, to speed up the process for these types of houses being built. And then the third thing is down payment assistance to allow people to actually have the money to buy the houses that are on the market now and the houses that will be coming on the market in the future once these permitting and zoning changes are made.
For me, my first step is honestly going to have to be credit repair and financial literacy for the community. You know, before a person even gets in position to buy, you have to be educated on how to even go about that process. So for me, it starts with education, which goes back to our outreach and our community engagement pieces. But then aside from that, now you do have to have down payment assistance. You do have to have resources such as Invest Atlanta for first time home buyers. But as he's just stated, you know, the target is married couples. And for myself, I'm a divorced man, so where do I fit? Right now, I currently roommate, right? That's what a lot of people in this city are doing, whether or not they admit it or not. So it takes financial literacy, credit repair, educational training, but then access to resources. Because if you're constantly involved, but you're still not aware of resources that'll allow you to actually become a homeowner, that mean you're just as disenfranchised as the people you're looking to serve. So I think we all must be educated and we all must be connected to resources, strategy, and a plan so it can become realistic for anyone to be a homeowner that hasn't already experienced that.
The first thing I would do was continue to educate the community, invite them out to workshops and bring them out and have community forums where they can be educated on different types of programs, down payment assistance, programs through Invest Atlanta and other partners that can assist in them securing that home. Also, we need to work with the developers in the city on bringing more housing options such as accessory dwelling units, townhomes. You have to have a different mix of housing options because everyone can't afford that single family home, especially, you know, if you got a new person that's just got out of college, just got married, starting a family. Those, those options need to be available for them, so we have to educate them and ensure that they're receiving those benefits through those lenders such as Invest Atlanta and those other options. Thank you.
Sherri B. Williams. Everybody here has a great idea what we need to do and all of it will probably work. We have, over at Greenbrier, we have five banks there. And I would almost guarantee, I'm ninety-nine percent sure, that every last one of them has a first time home buyer program. But we don't know about it. So education is important. We have resources a lot of times right in our back door. But until we connect, so I'm very clear on what my gift is. I connect people to the resources they need to improve their quality of life. So when I was a banker, when I lived in Chicago, that's one of the things that I did. I had first time home buyer workshops and I brought out all the players so that everybody would have all of the information in one room, so you don't have to get some the day, some the next day. So bringing all that together. And I want to quickly close by saying ADUs and TODs, transit oriented developments. You can decrease the number of cars if you increase the number of units that are close to transit.
Thank you, Sherri. You need the question again?
Of course.
That is okay. I might need the question again. What steps would you take to accelerate development of lower cost, smaller format homes that could be service options for first time home buyers?
So I think one of the, one of the first things that has to be done is to ensure that the powers that be recognize that promises have been made and promises have to be kept.
Could you turn your-
Oh, that would make sense. Yes. So one of the first things is that make sure that there are all sorts of policies and programming that is already set up for District eleven and, you know, for the city. And so it is important to ensure that the promises that have been made are kept, that we make sure that we ask for the things that are necessary for our area and we bring it to them and say, here's what you have promised, let's see how we get this done, and let's get this done now. And then hold them accountable for the work that has been promised to us. So there are all sorts of opportunities. And then also educate, make sure that people have different kinds of opportunities. ADUs and middle housing allow families to stay in place, allow people to age, and other family members come in. And so ensure that we are doing what's necessary.
All right, if we want to accelerate growth of this middle housing, we got to create the environment, right? So first, it starts with zoning, making sure that we kind of loosen up the zoning to allow for developers to actually build this housing without the constraints that they currently deal with. It's not an incentive for them to actually build this housing due to kind of how we're structuring those zoning codes. Two, we want to make sure that like when they build it, that it actually can be purpose for people who want to buy. That means kind of getting tougher on short term rentals and how we look at that and making sure that as we build it, people aren't just kind of diverting this new housing stock into some short term profit engine for themselves. And then lastly, just kind of looking overall and saying, all right, well, developers are building it, great, we got that settled. Two, it's now kind of moving towards, last piece. Make sure corporate developed, corporate entities can't buy the houses that we're building. So short term rentals, no. Corporate entities, no. Making sure that we loosen up the zoning codes, that we build housing and regular people can get them. That's how we get to the place we want to be too.
Well, first things first is to realistically look at where we are. Looking at the market of the past, the current, and the future. The reason why it's so hard to purchase right now is in twenty, two thousand and eight, we had the market crash. At that time, prices stagnated on homes. Now, regularly, home appreciation increased four percent year over year. I'm a real estate broker, so I know some of these stats, year over year. That was frozen, but when the pandemic hit, we actually accelerated back to where home prices would have been regardless, but prices did not keep up. I'm sorry, wages and salaries did not keep up. That's really causing a lot of the problem. What we need to do as a city is to encourage particular kind of housing in specific areas. In the downtown area and if District eleven, along the Camden Corridor, making zoning and housing permits for smaller homes, townhomes, condos, brownstone type homes where people can still purchase and own, but it's a small footprint and it allows for density.
This is why I love going first, but, but yeah, the zoning codes and ordinances have to change. Like, that's first and foremost. We have to allow for more creative and diverse housing, and everybody's named it, the duplexes, the triplexes, the townhomes, et cetera. I have to repeat that. So, but just trying to create something that nobody else has said is, I think we have to incentivize as well, Atlanta based developers. Like, we all know Herman Russell and what he's done for the city and what he's built. But who's the next Herman Russell? Who are the next Herman Russells? And I think if we can incentivize hometown developers where they have a sense of care, to also where we loosen up those zoning ordinances and codes that they know that we have a spot and a chance and an opportunity to do it for us, by us. And I just think that's something we can incentivize as well, whether that's tax breaks, whether that's Invest Atlanta, working with different organizations to just be creative and diverse the best that we can. But I hate going last because everybody has given good ideas, but that's what I got.
Thank you. All right. Great questions, audience. I think we can ask several of these. So first, one of these, I think we can do is another hand raising question. So we're going to go to that format and then we'll go back to the short response. So the question is, do you support and believe there's a need for public housing in the city of Atlanta? I'll read it again. Do you support and believe there's a need for public housing in the city of Atlanta? Thank you. All right, returning to our previous format. Nate, we'll begin with you this time. What is your solution to addressing the unhoused situation in District eleven?
Sure. So first off, when we're talking about unhoused people, most of the time we are talking about chronic homelessness, which is people who are experiencing homelessness for an extended period of time or multiple times within a set, a set number of-
which is people who are experiencing homelessness for an extended period of time or multiple times within a set of, a set number of years. What is hidden that is also a big problem is situational homelessness. So if you think of like a couch surfing student or someone that is a victim of domestic violence and just has to move out really quickly. This is something that doesn't get captured by our point in time measurement of homelessness, but is also very, very important. So housing first, yes, like we need to build homes for the chronically homeless and honestly, those that are situationally homeless. And then we also need to make sure that we pair that with the wraparound services that people need. That is going to be legal aid, that is going to be job training, drug addiction, mental health services, everything that people need to to be successful and have a stable foundation so that they don't continue to be homeless.
For me, my experience has been it definitely takes community resources. You know, I have a lot of friends that have experienced both, you know, situational and consistent homelessness. And it always is not the fault of the person that's going through it, honestly, is what I think, you know, you were just saying. It takes resources, it does take opportunities for these people. But I think the biggest thing that we're missing a lot of times is the corporate buy into our community. A lot of times, there's billions of dollars that are allocated into this city. Over the next five years, we have all these large events happening. What happens to that money as a whole? A lot of times, it gets compartmentalized to the sectors that the people show up, they have these important jobs and they get the the name recognition and they get the people that say, hey, I'm kind of scared of you to tell you, you can't get this. We need more people in our district who are informed, we need more advocacy who can speak up. Because at the end of the day, the reason we're left out of the conversation a lot of time is not because of a lack of an invitation, but a lack of the awareness and the education for the person that's speaking on behalf of the community. So I think we need to strengthen our people inside our communities that can help the developers develop, that can help the people that are homeless get out of their situation. But it takes a lot more inclusive opportunity for people in this city and not dividing the resources based off of affluence, if that makes sense.
How would approach the problem is that we're going to need to provide rapid assistance to the homeless. As I stated earlier, you know, there's a lot of folks out here that is homeless, veterans and and just, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of help that need to be out there. We're going to need to do rental assistance, the use of some of the public land that's owned by the city and the county. We need to get on top of that. I don't think that 20,000 unit numbers is adequate, it needs to be higher. And we need to get them in and start building those housing options so that we can get these homeless off the street. And at the same time, we also need to attack the mental state because a lot of time it's not just being homeless. You you have to address the drug addiction, the mental illness. That's where we have to stop first and address those issues because that has a lot to do with it. They're not just, you know, a lot, some, some people don't want to go to the shelters because they don't think it's adequate a place for them. They don't feel safe there. And so we just need to, as a whole, as a community, get together and come up with different types of initiatives, things.
Sherri V. Williams. I think we need to educate the community about the unhoused. They have a stigma. There are more people than most of us know that are actually unhoused, sleeping in their cars and in parks. I've worked with several unhoused initiatives and I'm a part of one now at Ebenezer Baptist Church. It's very complicated. So we need to, first of all, have a definition. Most of you remember the movie In Pursuit of Happiness? Remember the the father with the son? He had his sons sleeping or he took him to work with him, doing the best that he could to provide for his family. So all of these ideas are good and we need to stop talking about the problem. And we need to go toward implementation because people are hurting. And most of the time, they're being victimized and preyed upon because they don't have the resources that they need to pull themselves up. Thank you.
I got it.
Now, this is the last question. I moved to a different list. Yes. What is your solution to addressing the unhoused situation in District 11?
So when I think about unhoused in District 11, I think about the mom who's in the parking lot at the YMCA getting her kids dressed for school out of the trunk of her car. I think about the young people who live behind the Dollar General store and the folks who live in Ben Hill Park up by the pavilions. I think about the folks who are living in Adams Park and the tent that's in Cascade Nature Preserve and the folks that are over off Welcome All. And so what I, and so as 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 unfamiliar as we are about what it means to, and I shouldn't say we're all unfamiliar, about what it looks like to put in shipping containers or allowing, I think that's better for us than it is just to let people keep living. But at the same time, not just doing that, but providing wraparound services, mental health services, hope and encouragement.
Andre Bergen. The best way we can support the unhoused is attacking the NIBIism, the not in my back hood, not in my backyardism that happens around this issue. Everybody wants to help the homeless until it comes to their neighborhood. Pine Street is a perfect example. There's a stigma around, hey, we're helping people, but not right there, right? So what I like is to approach it in a decentralized manner. Smaller nodes across the city where we have focus, help to people where they can get to those places. So they don't have to cross the town just to get to that location. But then you add those wraparound services. So you have more concentrated, more focused addressing of the unhoused and the problems that exist when it comes to mental health, kind of joblessness, all those factors that play into a role. So decentralizing, making sure that everybody understands you all play a role in this, but it's not a concentration where it's overwhelming to any neighborhood. And if you do that, we can address the NIBIism that happens when we talk about the unhoused.
We've only seen the beginning of the unhoused crisis. It is going to blow up, continue as our population rises. By 2050, we're supposed to have a million people within city proper. We're at right around 500,000, a little less than 500,000 now, all right? So when all those people come to Atlanta, they're coming with wages, they're coming, they're coming and they're going to live someplace. They're going to live in the available housing, okay? So how are we going to take care of those that are unhoused now? We talked about public housing. That is building, constructing that and finding pathways to move the unhoused and the lower income into that housing is going to be the ultimate solution. Atlanta's experiencing what any other industrialized nation experiences. We are exactly the opposite. In most industrial nations, cities are where the wealthy live and the unwealthy live in the suburbs and in the rural side. We are now reversing that trend to be just like everyone else and that is why we're facing those pressures. I wish I had more than a minute.
Andre brought up a great point and it's back to what you said with the original questions about neighborhoods and communities saying no to certain developments. It's the same way with homelessness, even, it might even be more, more negating that coming to neighborhoods. So you're dealing with the pressure of community members that are already living there. And this is where my creativeness comes in, because I haven't seen it, at least in Atlanta. It's coming up with a building or a structure or an establishment to where it's work based. Because when I talk to the homeless people, I've actually had conversations with, or unhoused, excuse me, unhoused people on Campbell Road and Fairbrook, the unhoused people on Campbell Road and County Line. They want purpose, they want to go to work. And I think if we create an institution where it's work based, I don't know whether it's cleaning up, providing food for for kids, something to where it's adding value to the community, to where the community members, if it comes to their community, they could be proud of and say, hey, that building is is up, is kept well, these people go to work, they take care of the community and they're happy to have a center like that. And even if you create some guidelines or some incentives to say, okay, you work here or you stay here for a year and work and we have a transition program to put you into a work based establishment and then you go on and purchase your own home, something that we set you on the path to homeownership or stable housing.
All right, going last, a lot of people taking points. One point that Tony said that I was going to talk on was shipping containers. Atlanta has a lot of land where they could put shipping container communities where they could house the homeless. Another thing also is Atlanta Public Schools. They're talking about closing 17 schools. They could take some of those schools, make them, make them into housing for homeless people. No one for unhoused people, no one has to live on the street. But always, I think, education and training is always good. And always making sure that people know how to go about different things to get different things. A lot of things are, a lot of things are in place, but they don't know. And what is the one way, they say how to keep people from knowing things is put it in a book or read. So if people read and get educated more, then they'll learn more. But I think shipping container housing, as well as making a deal with Atlanta Public Schools, since they're about, since they own so much land in Atlanta and they're about to close 17 schools, we should, we could make up where there shouldn't be nobody unhoused in the city of Atlanta.
Thank you. All right, next audience question. How do you plan to address the threat of displacement to seniors and legacy homeowners from rising taxes? Keith, we'll begin with you. Yep, have it read again. How do you plan to address the threat of displacement to seniors and legacy homeowners from rising taxes?
Good question. So as I stated, the house that we own is someone that's been in the family since like 1965, right? But had she been still alive, I don't know how she would have been able to maintain this home. With taxes going up, her and the neighbors have all been, a lot of them has been displaced in our community. But what I think needs to happen is definitely there are some tax subsidies that can happen for the actual legacy. Is that what we call it, legacy citizens?
That's the question.
Yeah, I think there are some tax subsidies that should happen. I think, again, some of the money that's coming in from corporate that's coming into Atlanta, everything that's moving in the city comes from big business. So I think as part of the business structure that happens with these deals, there need to be allocatements, allocatements for each district, right? So if you do the data, I'm sure you'll be able to see which districts suffer the most from this. I know in my community it's very high. So I think tax abatements, I think corporate incentives, and then I think, I think really that's the only thing that comes to my mind right now, actually. Thank you.
I would do this by ensuring that the seniors aren't being displaced by making, ensuring they have certain types of incentives, programs that are accessible to them. Also, some of the seniors that have lived in the community for more than 30, 40 years, some of those homes are large homes and they look to downsize. And so since we have so much development going on, what we want to try to do is that we want to try to make sure that they have housing options such as, you know, they may, they may want to downsize to a cottage, but at the same time, we don't want to displace them from their community. They've been living in for so long. So we want to make sure that those options are available and affordable to them because they may not want to continue to live in that much house since they, the family's no longer there. A lot of them living, living alone. And so it's essential that we keep things intact and make sure that they are educated about the opportunities and programs affordable to them through the city, county, and those other entities. Thank you.
Sherri V. Williams. This question is near and dear to me. My mom is 86 years young. And she lives in the same house her and my dad moved into in 1963. There is a community benefits agreement that I was a part of writing with MARTA, with the Bus Rapid Transit Program. MARTA, NOR, the City of Atlanta, has adopted, has adopted that CBA yet. Just like what happened in English Avenue in Vine City. Those folks have been protected, their taxes have been frozen. We know best practices. Let's stop talking about what to do and let's implement. So if we set, if we adopt that community benefits agreement, the legacy residence will be protected because there will be a fund set up in order to pay the difference in what the taxes are so they won't lose their homes for taxes. Thank you.
In addition to, so I'll tell you what we, what I have done. When we were, when I was pastoring, we had lots of seniors in church who were struggling to keep their homes. And so we created a bank. We had, we learned how to create a bank so that they would not be displaced. I believe that the city should freeze taxes and should be able to hold people. We've created neighborhood in need programs so that parents, so that people, whatever they needed, we could talk about it. And then, and so I think what has to happen is that we create entities, that we work with banks so that they keep people in their homes and they're, we inform them. We did living trusts and living wills, making sure that families and invite generations to come in and talk about what it meant to stay in their mother's home, not to sell their grandmother's home. And so I think it is informative and make sure that we inform everybody about how that works.
Andre Bergen. To keep seniors in their homes, it's two things. We talk about collaboration and then allocation, right? When you look at your tax bill, I'm pretty sure everybody looked at the tax bill and realized you get taxed by the city and the county and Atlanta Public Schools. So any idea around how do we help save seniors' taxes has to be a coordinated effort of what that criteria looks like. What do we all agree to, to make sure that things are affordable across the board and not just Atlanta is helping with the taxes, but Fulton County is doing increases that kind of go against the point that we're trying to make. Two, allocation, making sure that we have fund for these tax abatements. So we look at tax allocation districts, we need to be inclusive of seniors and say, hey, as we're generating revenue, can we divert some funds to make sure that the areas that are gentrifying or developing quickly, those seniors aren't displaced by rising taxes due to this great development and progress that we're making. So allocation, collaboration.
Can you read it one more time?
Got the question again. No, that's the other question. How do you plan to address the threat of displacement to seniors and legacy homeowners from rising taxes?
Okay. When it comes to seniors, on the south side, that's that southwest, that's southeast, that's where the the problem lies when it comes to taxes. On the north side, it's not an issue, it's not the same issue. So freezing taxes for seniors particularly, creating subsidies for seniors is important. They're seniors, they don't have as much time as the rest of us. They've worked hard, they paid their mortgages, let them off the hook. We we let off new businesses that that come to town and build businesses, give them 20 year breaks on on their taxes. We should do the same for our seniors. When it comes to legacy homeowners, those that are inheriting homes, all right? Now, those taxes aren't as big of an issue if they're inheriting a paid off home. However, they need to understand what it means to pay these taxes. So better education there. If they can, they're using for a rent someplace else, it's much less than those taxes, but they're not aware of how the system works.
Protecting residents against the rising taxes, I think freezing taxes are option as well. But you can't focus this strictly on seniors, it has to be, to me, in my opinion, how long you've owned the home. And this is Atlanta dealing with its sins, right? The fact that we've had this 40 year old ordinance around single family homes, you you decrease the amount of density and creative homeownership and housing developments, this is what you get. When you only can build a certain amount of single family homes, you're going to get rising taxes because there's no competition, there's no density. So with us changing these ordinances and codes, it allows us to reward legacy residents by saying, you've been here 30 years. You've, you've, you've paid your, your debt to society, you deserve to have it frozen because you did that. Excuse me, that's how it might get that confused with being in jail, but I'm just saying, you paid enough to the city to where it could be frozen and you, you've earned that right. So for me, when we change those codes and those ordinances to allow more density, more creative housing units, that will even out and say, hey, we have more people living here, now we can freeze the taxes and those legacy residents are okay. And we also are encouraging new residents as well.
With so many people moving, with so many people moving to Atlanta, and if you move, if you're building new houses, duplexes, condos, townhouses, triplexes, you get the taxes from those people. Legacy residents should be excluded from paying property taxes. If someone has been in their house 35, 40 years, they raised their kids, they're retiring, they're retiring, they come, they shouldn't have, and they paid off their mortgage, they shouldn't have to pay any more taxes. Also, if you, if you have kids and your kids have been out of school at, out of at least 10 to 15 years, you shouldn't you shouldn't have to pay school taxes anymore, because you don't have kids in school. And you can get, from all the people that's moved into the city, moving into, buying other housing, they can pay those taxes. I feel the legacy residents will pay their dues, know what they had to do, raise their families, took care of their community, don't need to pay taxes anymore. Their taxes should be frozen.
I'll talk about three things to address protecting seniors from property taxes. First is property tax relief programs that give cash to senior legacy residents to lower the cost of their property taxes. The second thing I will talk about is legal aid. So I started off my career working in legal aid. And in addition to going to court to defend low-income tenants and members of the community, we would also go out into the community and do community clinics. And what I think we need to make sure is that the seniors in District Eleven in the city of Atlanta are applying for every exemption that already exists. And they may just need some help on being able to apply for those exemptions and take advantage. The second thing that they may also need help with is estate planning, because folks have worked so hard for their homes, and we need to make sure that property taxes is not why we are losing wealth as a community. Third thing I will say is we need more affordable homes. I was talking to a senior just in the past couple of weeks, who said she wanted to move, to downsize, could not afford anywhere in southwest Atlanta. I want people to be able to stay, and we need more affordable homes to make that happen.
Thank you all. All right, got a couple of questions about renters. So to try to move through these, I'm going to do one as another hand raised question, and then we'll go kind of like a pretty open question about what to do to help renters. So for the hand raised question. If the state were to remove the preemption on local rent control ordinances, would you support such an ordinance in the city of Atlanta? So as background, the state preempts any form of rent control in municipalities across the state. So if the state were to somehow decide that they wanted to remove that restriction, would you support enactment of a rent control, a rent regulation ordinance in the city of Atlanta? Thank you. Okay, this is a pretty open-ended question, so take it where you want to go. Reginald, start with you. What about renters and the district and the city? That's the question. Yeah. We've talked a lot about homeowners and first-time owners and legacy homeowners staying in their homes, but the question is, what about renters in the district and the city?
That's a very important question, because, you know, the rent controls are out of control. And so I think with the medium average apartment is like fourteen hundred, sixteen hundred, that's unaffordable. So I think we need to have some rent controls in place, and we need to have options, more options to have renters so they can be able to afford, you know, you've got a family for trying to spend sixteen hundred dollars a month, that's a lot of money for a family that, you know. And so it's just unaffordable. So I think that we bring more density to the area, we bring more rent controls and, you know, more, you know, you have better options of having, you know, the price kind of stabilize. And so I'm open to doing that.
Sherri.
Sherri B. Williams. I am a renter. I've owned two condos when I lived in Chicago. I moved to Phoenix, I wasn't sure how long I would be there. I put a down payment on a house. I found out it was in an environmental toxic area. I canceled the new build, and I ended up renting until I moved back to Atlanta. There are different reasons why people rent. There's misinformation about renters. There is never a one, well, there's misinformation about renters. It's not one size fits all. I think you cannot talk about affordable housing without talking about living wages. We need for workers to have the right to organize, and we need to train people on jobs that pay a living wage. Thank you.
So renters, so I'm going to go with Edgewood Court Apartments. I think there should be rent control. I also think that landlords have a moral obligation and responsibility that should be held accountable for how people live. And they should, as I've been watching the news about different places where landlords are not doing right by their, the people who live there, I believe the city has a responsibility and obligation to people who rent to ensure that they're safe. If landlords are able to make so much money, there should also be, there should be rent controls for how people live. But then also that we come in and make sure that there are wraparound services for folks that are renting. Renting is vitally important, because everybody doesn't want to own a home, and everybody does not want the responsibilities of land. But everybody should be able to live well and live in a space they love.
Andre Bergen. We talk about homeowners, we talk about stability, right? Kind of making sure taxes don't get out of control, making sure all these things that homeowners care about are manageable. Same thing for renters. One of the things that we talk about when we talk about rent stability is the price of your apartment. And I think one of the duties of the city is to make sure that, as a city, we get tough on landlords to say, hey, you just can't spike the rent because it's opportunistic for you to make a little bit more money. Renters need stability, renters need protection. So just making sure that the renters are protected and say, hey, you can stay in that apartment that you love, there won't be huge spikes in rent that would disrupt your plans, whether that's to own another home, stay in the neighborhood that you want to stay in, or what have you. But stability needs protection, and that's what the city should offer.
So about renters. Without rent control, the racial demographics of the city are going to change, and they're going to change very, very quickly, all right? The only way to address that is some form of rent control. I believe in District Eleven especially, there should be incentives to provide paths to homeownership. The new building codes that we need to put in place, or the incentives for apartments, condos, all those different housing that allows for population density, again, along the Hamilton corridor between the low and county line in the, in downtown Atlanta. In our growth areas is where we should be building, we should allow, we should promote and encourage incentives to buy where we can. The new folks that are coming into Atlanta are going to have the income, because they're being pulled in by the new jobs that offer higher income. So that's the only way to address that, but without it, rents are going to continue to rise as they naturally would.
I know renters have the stereotype of being extremely transient, and then that's the issue. People think they're not going to be here long, so we don't have to care about them, we can spike our prices, we can do whatever, because they're only going to be here for a year or two anyway. But it's funny, because when I first moved firmly into southwest Atlanta District Eleven, I lived in Village on the Green with my father, but then I got my own place and my college roommate right there while I was attending Clark Atlanta University, and we only paid eight twenty-five for a two-bedroom right beside Greenbrier Mall. I took the MARTA eighty-three to work in Midtown. Because, so as we're talking about renters, I think we can be intentional. We're intentional when it comes to senior homes. We take care of our seniors, no doubt about it. But we can be intentional about where we, excuse me, where we place these new, these apartment buildings or any place you can rent, put them close to transit. As Hamilton Road expands and MARTA expands on that corridor, let's put them right there to where, okay, they don't have to have a car. You don't have to have these extensive bills. And also, I've talked to constituents about their utility bills, like the apartment will say they'll pay for it. And then they get this eighty thousand water bill, and their water is threatened to be cut off. So advocating for more transparency for the management companies and these landlords that aren't transparent about the utility bills that they're paying and putting the people who live there in a risky situation.
Part of the problem, I'm a real estate investor. Part of the problem why the rent is so high now, just not in Atlanta, well, let's take Atlanta. Forty percent of the houses in Atlanta now are owned by three companies. Forty percent. When you have that percentage only owned by three companies, they set the market. They set the market. Now, should the rent be that high? No, but what we need to do also is increase wages. There are a lot of people, especially on Hamilton Road in District Eleven, that are still making twelve, thirteen dollars an hour. Now, what Steve was just saying, eight twenty-five, that was years ago. A two-bedroom in Atlanta now averages eighteen hundred. And if you're in Atlantic Station, that's twenty-three, twenty-four hundred. That's more than some people's mortgage. But the stigma for renters has changed, because now a lot of millennials don't want a home. They just want to rent. They don't want to deal with property taxes, having to cut the grass, having to, when something breaks, they call a landlord, they don't have to deal with that.
So I was born and raised in southwest Atlanta, left to get my education and serving the military, and then moved back to our community. And when I moved back, I started off renting a room in a house, and then I moved into an apartment, and then I was able to buy a house. Like, this is the ladder that a lot of people climb and should be able to climb. But the reality is that we're missing some of the lower rungs on that ladder, and that those lower rungs that are missing is affordable housing. Rent inflation is not given. Rent inflation is the result of a policy that restricts the construction of affordable housing. We have seen across this country places that have made the building of housing across all income levels a priority. We've seen rent come down. An example that anyone in here can look at is Austin, Texas, and what has happened in their rent over the past few years. So we can do something about the rise of rent. I'm about to run out of time, I would just say a couple of things. We need more rental protections in this city. I would support expanding legal aid in the city to protect renters. Renters are a vulnerable population, and the government needs to make sure that they are taken care of.
I totally agree that rental assistance definitely needs to be in place for people. Most of my friends are either first-time homeowners or real estate investors. I don't have a lot of in my circle that are renters, but I know a lot of the people in the community are. So I get confused a lot of times, well, how are you supposed to actually pay a rent, right? The rent is, like he said, twenty-four hundred, twenty-one hundred. For a person like myself who grew up off Hamilton, to think about paying eighteen hundred a month on Hamilton, it's totally unrealistic, you know, just to be honest. So when we speak about, when we speak about, like, all these different things that happen, all I hear, guys, honestly, is corporate buy-in and constituent pushback. I hear that there has to be a medium where the people in the community can have a voice, because honestly, guys, to be honest with you, when I'm listening to these questions, I'm like, everyone I know is struggling through this process. So how do you even give this answer that in a four-year term, it can actually change? Is that even realistic? I don't want to sit here and tell people stories of what I think can happen that I'm not positive about, but what I do know is there has to be more corporate responsibility, more resources, and it all buys back into citizen pushback.
Thank you. As a heads up, we've got two more questions. So penultimate question, I'm very excited about this one. Should we allow churches to, I'm going to slightly edit this question whoever asked this. That's why I can't quite read it. Let's just do, actually, we'll do this one quickly, just another hand raised question. Should we allow churches to build housing on their property? And let's say, single-family attached structures, townhomes, not towers. Should we allow churches to build single-family attached structures on church-owned land by right? So that is without additional approvals or going to the NPU or anything like that. I'm going to say the question again, because I'm editing a question. Should we allow churches or houses of worship to, by right, be allowed to build single-family attached housing on their property? Say, raise your hand if you agree with that proposition, do not, raise your hand if you do not agree. So that would be like, single-family attached, like townhomes or sort of, no, things like that. So not a single-family attached. I'll, let me clarify my definitions. Yeah.
Would they have to deal with zoning or anything like that in the area?
Let me, yeah, I apologize for using jargon. I'll bring it down. Should churches be allowed to build townhomes on their property by right? As in, there is no rezoning required, there is no going to an NPU to request an approval, they have the rights to build townhome scale density on their church-owned land without further rezoning? If you believe churches should have, houses of worship should have that right, raise your hand. If you don't think they should, don't raise your hand.
I think they should if they have, I think they should if they have the proper infrastructure.
Thank you. All right, last question. And for this one, we'll do, answer the question, and then please tell the audience how they can learn more about your campaign at the conclusion of tonight's event. Last question. I mean, I'm actually ending this a little bit early before the eight o'clock, so that you have time to stay here and connect with the constituents. So I think that'll be better than remarks. So, last question, and then, yeah, please tell them how they can, your website or other ways they can learn about your campaign. All right. What do you see as the root cause of Atlanta's housing challenges? And why are these challenges becoming more severe? I'll read it again? No, this is, and I believe we'll start with, with Sharper Sherri on this one. I'll read it one more time. What do you see as the root cause of Atlanta's housing challenges? And why are these challenges becoming more severe? Sherri, when you're ready.
Sherri B. Williams. I think that root cause is the lack of prioritization over an extended period of time that has gotten out of control because of the number of people that are moving in and the decrease in the number of jobs that pay a living wage. As a former teacher, and I'm sure there's some teachers or educators in the room, our families, our working families are suffering for lack of affordable housing. They are chasing rents. So people are enrolling, taking their kids out of one school, putting them in another school, because they're trying to find a place that has affordable housing. So the entire community is suffering because of the instability that the kids have in their education. So the challenges that we face is that we know best practices. We need for people to come to the table.
And where can we learn more about your campaign?
And I'm on IG and Facebook. Follow me. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to ask it again. What do you see as the root cause, or causes, of Atlanta's housing challenges? And why are these challenges becoming more severe?
The root cause is greed. People want to make more money, people, and don't care about anybody else. It is just about money. It is about how, when you have, every week, you have more and more people talking about how they can cut down more trees, even though you're not supposed to, but they're ready to pay the fine, because they know if they are able to get into the, build the property, they're going to make more money. And so it is simply greed.
Where can we learn more about your campaign?
You can learn more about my campaign at BealanIngramFor, spelled out, District11.com, or you can just type in Tony Bealan Ingram, and I'm going to show up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andre Bergen. Root cause. Atlanta's a great city, and a lot of people move here. I think the biggest thing, we talk about a dope city, is growth. And we've grown faster than we thought we could. We were, right? And with that growth hasn't come the proactive planning around how growth looks like, the way we do our ordinances, the way that we look at transportation, the way we look at our infrastructure. We are growing at a rapid rate, and we aren't planning ahead for the growth. I think if we say Atlanta's going to grow about ten percent, we probably grew about fifteen percent, twenty percent, right? Like, that type of growth has to be proactively done. And it's Atlanta kind of grown into this big international city status that we now are in. And we were looking at this for the longest since the Olympics. But rapid growth has to come with proactive planning, and we haven't done that. So it leads to a lot of problems in terms of housing, transportation, watershed, you name it. We have grown into ourselves.
And where can we learn more about your campaign?
You can learn more at AndreBergen.com.
Thank you.
Yeah, sample.
Can you say the question, just make sure I answer it right?
More than half of it. I will say this as many times as I say. What do you see as the root cause of Atlanta's housing challenges? And why are these challenges becoming more severe?
All right, honestly, we are a victim of our own success. Since the Olympics, more and more people have moved to Atlanta. I came in nineteen ninety-seven. All right, I didn't go to Doug, I didn't go to Maze, but I've been other places. All right, I didn't go to Doug, I didn't go to Mays, but I've been other places, um, uh, uh, from Long Island, New York. So I, I've seen what happens, uh, when a city develops. Um, really quick, it is, uh, our, our problems have been exacerbated by, uh, destruction of the public housing that we did have. That caused a displacement of lots and lots of people, and caused some of the homelessness that we, we see now. And allowing for loopholes in our housing policy. Uh, Airbnb, they, uh, they incentivize purchasing single-family homes for rental. And then we put policies in place to limit, say, you, you can live in one house in Airbnb and own another one Airbnb, that, um, that, that ordinance is not being enforced. So people still have multiple Airbnbs, which shortens the housing availability, availability we do have. And then we had developments like what's happening in the Gulch, when the, uh, city allows the fine to be paid, or the penalty be paid, instead of producing the affordable housing. Cutting those loopholes and, uh, yeah, thank you.
And where can we learn more about your campaign?
Oh, and more about my campaign, KurtCollierATL.com, that's Kurt spelled with a C.
Thank you.
I think the rate at which Atlanta has grown and become this huge international city has affected us in a way that we lost our identity. We lost the essence of what made Atlanta, at least the Atlanta that I grew up on, special. Jermaine Dupri always said that people don't visit, they move out here, and that was because Atlanta was affordable. People knew they could come here, afford to live here, and make something of themselves. And even if you were born here, you could be born in Mechanicsville and become Marvin Arrington Senior. You could be from Addisville, become Andre Dickens. That was a realistic expectation. We have the education places that are here. I'm a product of the AUC, Andre's a product of the AUC, and FAMU, but AUC. But, um, the, the opportunity here, and I think we got lost in that growth by saying, we're trying to appeal to the international market, and in that, we lost the essence of taking care of the people who are here, and putting their value and their worth and their family, and their tears, and their blood, and their sweat into this city. And I think we need to refocus to worry about the people that are here, and knowing that if we take care of us, that we'll remain and, and even grow further as that, that city we claim to be. So I just think we, we're dealing with the identity crisis, and we can restructure that. My name is Stephen Dingle, I can be found everywhere, social media and website, at DingleForAtlanta, everything spelled correctly, DingleForAtlanta. Thank you.
Say that question one more time.
You got it. What do you see as the root cause of Atlanta's housing challenges? And why are these challenges becoming more severe?
One, one of the root causes is true nineteen ninety-six Olympics, nineteen ninety-six Olympics put us on the map, that made us an international city. Uh, the main root cause is, like I said before, three companies own forty percent of the houses in, in the metro proper area. When you have three companies controlling that much, they have all the say-so on what goes on. They have the money to, uh, make sure that the right people, that they're able to get contracts for, or to buy, uh, gets what they need, which is pretty much their palm greeds, getting money. Um, that, and also, um, I'm just gonna be honest, the black mecca. A lot, I hear a lot of people from other places, especially when I went to this college in Marsh Brown, a lot of people said, well, we came to AUC, A, Atlanta because black people were doing so well. Uh, I had a friend that I went to school with, and he said, the only people that he saw black in, in the courthouse in, in Los Angeles were the people in the jogging suits, in the jumpsuits, orange jumpsuits. He said, here, you find so many people in prosperous areas, we've had a black mayor for fifty years. You don't get that anywhere else. No other city besides Atlanta has gotten that. And that is the reason why, because we are the black mecca, and so many people move here.
And where can we learn more about your campaign?
HaroldHartnett.com is my website. Harold Maurice Hartnett, you can, Harold Maurice Hartnett, you can Google me, or you can hit me on Instagram, HartnettForTheSwats. I'm on Instagram, Facebook, uh, LinkedIn, Google me, I'm there. Thank you.
Uh, our housing challenges are, in my opinion, the result of city regulations that make it harder to build housing, uh, dense housing, affordable housing, uh, which causes an undersupply in housing, or not enough homes for the amount of people we have, uh, which leads to higher prices, higher rents, higher property taxes. The zoning and permitting power, uh, lies at the city council level, in my opinion. This is one of the most important powers, the biggest powers that we will have as city council persons, and affordability will be a priority for me, uh, immediately. Uh, my name is Nate Jester, I am a real estate attorney. Uh, I partner with churches and nonprofits to build mixed-income developments in the city of Atlanta, and I'm on the board of an affordable housing nonprofit called the Atlanta Neighborhood Development Partnership. We advocate, we build, and we preserve affordable housing across the metro area. Uh, you can find me on all social media platforms, my name's Nate Jester, it might be NateJesterATL, uh, depending on the platform, and you can find out more at VoteNateJester.com.
Uh, to me, all the answers lie within capitalism and inclusion. Everything I've heard tonight when it comes to housing, it lends back to corporate people that are buying, buying the city. You know, starting from the Olympics, of course, you know, we understand that, but I think at the end of the day, when you don't have infrastructure already set in place, because you can't project something just off hopes and dreams, once it happens, sometimes the reality of the dream and the hard work is a little too big to manifest in, into real time. So for me, I think moving forward is gonna take a lot of collaborative efforts. You really need to get the community back at the table. I think over these past couple decades, we've had more corporate participation, which allows us to kind of mimic a New York when the infrastructure wasn't actually there for that. So I think we have to bring back some of these ambitions, not meaning we don't build more homes or anything of that nature, but I think there has to be more understanding on zoning, codes, infrastructure, meaning people must put plans in place that actually, um, meet the growth. You know, they say it's supposed to grow by X amount of millions over the next five years. What is actually gonna help that plan to make sure more Atlantans aren't pushed out? There's gotta be some type of change in the policy that happens with the budgets that go into the developments. I'm Keith Lewis, I can be found at KeithLewisFORATL, and the Instagram is KeithLewis, the number four, ATL. Thank you.
Okay, the challenges are, are related to, uh, the policies and the procedures, uh, downtown at the city, uh, planning department, uh, the zoning regulations, and so what's making it worse is that it needs to be updated, we need to look at different, uh, processes of getting permitting, uh, processed quickly, quicker. And so, uh, with those, instant, uh, implementation of those tickle the plans, I think we can, you know, move the city forward in a greater direction. So we need to get with the office of zoning development, planning department, along with the council, and get these, uh, housing initiatives, uh, back to where we need to have them at. You can find more about my platform at VoteRussian.com, and thank you.
All right. First, want to begin by thanking the audience again for being here in person and our folks in the live stream. Thank you all very much. This is democracy. But then again, I, I want to thank the candidates for, for being here. You all have a tough decision to make, you've got a lot of great options here, um, so thank you again, just want to really appreciate you all both for running and for your engagement tonight. Um, and again, thanks St. Luke's for hosting us, we'll be back here tomorrow with the District Two Forum, and you can obviously scan the QR codes around, around the rooms and learn more about abundant housing in Atlanta. I believe we need to be out of here by eight-thirty, one of those, you don't have to go home, but you gotta get out of here, so the candidates will hopefully hang around for a while to, uh, speak directly to constituents. I have to run, 'cause I have a baby at home, so I will see you all next time. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing good.
Good, 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 I apologize, I'm late.